Video hot, the video's hot.
Yes.
I can probably try to.
No, I just see that um it's a council budget. We get those. It probably should be known that they. And they don't, they don't accept for us.
Yeah.
So those ones in the list. Because you said it happened. Um. I heard it called. Yeah.
Oh, we don't.
We're back.
You're okay.
Oh, hey.
Good.
I mean, I can back into it once they know, but I just don't know where my.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
And I would say if you stay together.
Well, if they are comfortable. We could get that out.
Cause they always.
But then maybe. I mean, I'm pretty, I'm pretty close.
I.
What do you mean?
What?
Do you think it's two and a half to three months for timeline?
If it's a minute. I know, that's what I mean.
I, I know. Sir, sir.
Like the end of April? Like in the April.
So normally not, we have the last thing on the year, so Toby put.
Well, I was thinking that next step, the reason I put that date in there is because it was like some visual, we want to run it all the way up to September thirty first, twenty twenty six. That's why I put it on a cover of last year, but they have another subscription. And I would assume we could. Yeah, and I think it's just that we, the infrastructure, I don't think the health is happy, which is what we're trying to do.
I love her being sure.
But actually.
You know what I'm saying? I have the.
So anyway.
I think. It's like. Somewhere.
So I would say.
I think that's plenty of time.
I would say. The basically.
Well, like if we were to. And then we can.
Have. If that's right. Right. I, I don't.
Sorry, I was gonna get one of those. No, I mean, I think they would see one that's just shining through their alley. And she was shining her lights in your area. Okay. Like.
Oh, not what I.
Something along that line?
Yeah, we can work. I don't wanna make, make it too hard. Unless they, they see it.
Did you guys see?
They might maybe, maybe we see.
I'd like to call the February fourth council meeting to order. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Um, I think this is part of the consent agenda, the meeting we had where we went through the various committees. And on the planning commission. I believe I'm also on the commission for two years. I have my first two and I am still on the planning commission. Running Liz Bilbonder and Rosalyn.
Those were just who we reappointed.
Okay.
You're still on there because your term is still going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've had a, a motion to approve the consent agenda, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We will recess the regular city council meeting at. Five thirty-one PM to conduct a public hearing on a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for an administrative site plan approval process. The administrative process is only for small commercial or housing projects which meet certain conditions. This process was recommended for approval by the planning commission. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone for or against this matter? All right, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five thirty-two PM. And then can I get a motion then to adopt ordinance number four ninety-two amending zoning code to allow for an administrative site plan approval?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we're going to have a discussion or take action on Tri-County Humane Society contract. Sarah, is there something you wanted to, to highlight from, from that as you mentioned?
Yeah, so I confirmed with um Tri-County, they are not willing to add a participation fee. And they're not um wanting to change how they submit animals to us. You know, they used to call and get approval. They indicated where they're happy to talk through how that process goes, but I, I, that's not my question or, you know, the, the request I had, so. It is either we take it or we don't is basically where we're at. Um, I did um, I did do some checking. I can't find any other ones, any other locations that will do a contract. Um, and actually, interestingly enough, today at the county board, they actually looked at a Tri-County Humane Society contract. And the reason they're presenting that, a contract there is because there's no other option. Um, but their contract looks to be that just their staff, I think it's a minimal, just their staff would take in animals as needed. It's not one where we allow the public to take in animals and pay for them. I just, I don't have many options. I know Councilmember Mathiowetz went around and tried to find some options. Um, and maybe you wanna talk, Gary, about what you.
I've been working with Malaka Vets Clinic and I thought we had something going, but they're short staffed and they can't possibly do what we need. But they gave me a number tonight to contact an individual. Uh, I don't know if you ever heard of the purple cat? Okay, it's a mobile. Uh, there's vets that, that the lady works with. And uh, talking to the people over there sounded like she might be very interested in helping consult. Uh, that we didn't have contact with her, I gave Sarah the number. And if you contact her tomorrow, I think we can possibly come up with something very promising. I don't know anything about contracts or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm, and I would have to ask them if they will do a contract to bring in animals, and you said you weren't sure about the dogs?
I, I didn't ask about that. I know they, they, they talk cats. I didn't ask any questions, but I, I'm only going through the Malak Vets Clinic too.
Okay.
So.
And I can certainly call.
Don't they do the spay release?
Fix and release, correct.
And that's their, their part of the. They, I didn't think they took in strays and boarded until they were.
Depending upon the situation, uh, this gels is an animal lover, but if it takes need to find a home, they will. Uh, so I can't say that they do board them, but if there's a situation, they can take care of them. My stepdaughter last winter took care of sixteen cats and they worked with her closely and did a very good job, very reasonable. So I think it's worth a chance to talk to them.
Has Tri-County given us a, we need a contract?
She wanted a contract as soon as possible. And, you know, my last response, you know, I just said, well, I, the, the questions, we, we have some questions on these terms, can we talk about these terms? And then the response I got back was um, we're not gonna do a participation fee. Um, and, you know, she said she was happy to just explain why they have their process in place, but I. Not gonna change. So it's kinda, we take it or we, we say yes or we say no. The, the concern the attorney is probably going to have, and I don't wanna put words, like dangerous dogs is one of the concerns. We have to be able to have a spot for dangerous dogs.
From a statute.
From a statutory perspective, that's a focus that I know myself and Chief McMillan have discussed as well, is what do we do with dangerous dogs? Under statute, there is a requirement that they are quarantined for a certain amount of period of time too, especially if there's a bite involved. So we are concerned if we don't have a place to bring those. Um, so that's what we're also looking at when we're looking at these contracts is not only what do we do with the stray animals, but what do we do in a dangerous dog situation as well? And that's where we're running into some difficulty where um certain organizations may take strays, but they may not be able to accommodate uh, an animal that has been another animal or another person.
And that's uh, animal to human or animal to animal bites?
So under the statute, it could be both depending on the history of the animal too. And depending on the severity of the injury.
I wish I had better answers for you, I really do.
So uh. To the statute concern. Doesn't sound like there's a lot of options. Curious as to what Central Minnesota would do if there wasn't a Tri-County Humane Society? Could it, I mean, we need to have a contract in order to bring dogs that need to be quarantined? Or do we need to have a contract just for us to be able to drop off animals in general?
They want it all. Yep, all under one contract. Now, they wouldn't negotiate terms.
Right.
The county was able to negotiate some terms. I don't know why that was, I didn't. I, I just saw that there was some terms that were expressed by the county attorney and the co, the county packet today. And um, they just, they were able to make some movement on some items.
Uh, with regards to the contract, were there maximums imposed for dropping off stray animals? I saw that there was the one maximum of two fifty. So.
Like our city budget maximum?
No, for like their maximum, so if they, someone drops off a stray cat and it's there for, you know, it's, it's X dollars per day. I, just wondering from a contract standpoint, I mean, are we, they keep a cat for, for nine months at ten dollars a day, are we on the hook for?
They would likely euthanize.
Euthanize before then? Okay.
Yeah, they don't keep um, like, certain animals, they will have to make that decision and euthanize. Uh, we're not gonna have an animal that we're gonna be charged for, for nine months. It's gonna max.
Okay.
Yeah. Because it will, it will either get adopted out or euthanized. Cause they can't do that either, they, they don't have the space for that. Yeah, and it does have some terms in here on five business days or how stray animals are held up to five business days.
Okay.
And then there's also some about how they treat litters of cats and stuff like that too.
Sure, yep.
Yep.
Well.
So, yeah, I guess um, I, I need to, what do you, I don't know if that, we can do a whole lot more with it.
So we either needed to, to determine two things, one, if we want to sign the contract, two, if we want, if there's gonna be a max on how much we're willing to spend in the contract, or is it open-ended?
There is not a max right now.
No.
It is not, there is not a max.
We, we can't say after two thousand dollars, you start turning them away.
If you wanna prove it with that. I'm happy to relay that. I mean, if that's what you wanna do.
Myself and Sarah can certainly go back to the Tri-County Humane Society and try to negotiate terms, just the indication we got before is that there really wasn't room for negotiation. Uh, perhaps with Benton County having some movement, we could try to piggyback off of that and see what we could do if we could work together in that spot. But if you have suggestions on the contract, that might be helpful in us communicating those terms to, to Tri-County saying, the council will not approve this unless these certain provisions are included.
And I didn't ask about a max, I don't, unless I missed it from the last meeting, I just asked about the items I had in my notes.
Sure, no, I don't think we asked, I, I just think it's, at this point, we're just trying to, I think, move on from this.
Yep.
Um, I, I, I think we're spending way too much time than it's worth personally, uh, but um, I, I mean, so I'm just making sure. If we didn't sign a contract. What happens if somebody from Foley brings a stray cat to Tri-County Humane Society? They just say no?
If we don't?
Yeah, if we don't sign a contract, what, what's the worst that could happen?
They will take it if they can based on availability, but that's where she indicated it could be three to four weeks of waiting to get a spot for that vehicle, without a contract. Contract um entities get priority.
The other aspect of that is we wouldn't have a spot to bring any dangerous dogs.
For the quarantine, okay.
It's not necessarily a, a prevalent issue within the city, which is a good thing, but if it does arise, that may be something that we would have to try to navigate if it's not having a place to bring these dogs.
Would we be able to piggyback off the county's contract for something with, to that severity?
I might have thought about that today, but I did not get a chance to follow up on it.
We would likely need someone from the county to assist us with that process, so we might be at their mercy a little bit. We have not had a conversation on if we could have a, a, a joint powers agreement with that aspect, but that's something we could explore.
I, I just also don't, I struggle with what, how much, like you said, how much time are we gonna do this, how much?
Right.
Are we gonna spend at a staff time, hours, are we gonna go back for weeks and weeks and, and what's the value? In that, you know? You spend how much in staff costs and then?
Well, I think, till we find out what the county's gonna do and uh, see what this lady can do for us over there, I think we put this on hold.
Should we just say no con, you want me to just tell her no contract right now based on the terms?
No, I would, I would not recommend.
Is that what the council's decision is?
Cause these people over there work under state and federal grants of some sort, so they are funded. I just don't know to what extent they can give to us until you uh, contact them. Cause I'm going through a third party, I didn't get to the content, you know, talk to the individuals, so I'd like to see what they can do for us and kinda what uh, the price might be. I don't think it's gonna be as extreme as what these people are gonna do, but.
The last time I talked to the spay neuter release, they basically could do us once a year and maybe a certain number of cats.
It sounded like they would be quite generous, I don't know, it's worth, uh, worth holding off and seeing what they can do.
So would the direction of the council be then, um, we will not accept this contract as it's written right now? Is that? And we're gonna look into another option?
I don't like the idea that they're not willing to negotiate.
Yeah.
I mean, there's gotta be some wiggle room and they're not willing to do that, so.
Yeah, I can show you the emails and my correspondence with.
I, I'm. I believe that that's not in good faith. And we do have another option that.
I do, I think it's worth looking into.
Okay, is that the consensus?
I think, I'm okay looking into some other option.
Should we take a vote on this? Let's just take a vote. Yeah, is there anybody?
I'm thinking of the motion.
We, so we need a motion, okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to suggest a motion a council member may make is rejecting the contract outright. And that can open up discussion too.
Well, I'll make the motion that we reject the uh. Tri-County Humane Society contract.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes. I personally can't say that I would support a no contract. Running dogs and cats are a safety issue, a health issue. And if, the problem that these organizations like Tri-County have is limits on money as we all have to face. And size of where they can put them. I just believe that as a council, we have to consider the safety of our citizens. This morning I had to call and Katie came to try and find the German short hair again that gets loose. And it comes from the other side of twenty-three, so it's like, it's, it's got a goal, you know? But the bottom line, I just feel we could have a big legal problem if we have nothing to do with strays. And then we have somebody's pit bull gets out and bites a little kid. And then we're getting sued cause we have nothing to take care of them. To get rid of them. I just, I can't say no contract.
I was hoping to, to move on from this issue and, and solve it tonight. Uh, I think we're uh, spending more money than the, the approximate fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars we'd spend total this year on the issue. My personal, my personal thoughts on that.
I like the idea of putting like a maximum, like you said, just two thousand dollars and then once we hit it, that's it. Because we do need a place for a dangerous dog if that were to arise, but that's just my two cents.
I'm all for capping it.
Yeah.
Definitely, but it sounds like they don't wanna cap it.
I didn't ask that specific question, cause I didn't know that that was one of the options. I asked about the participation fee and I asked about the um, how they, they call and accept them. Because they wouldn't call us anymore for the exception.
I'd, I'd be more in favor of finding that out. Maybe still allow for, you know, the dangerous dogs and, and things of that nature beyond the, the contract, I mean, I think that's a different issue. But for general public, just dropping off animals and charging the city, I mean, I'd, I'd like to think that we could put a max on it. That's m, my thought, because otherwise we can't judge how much this can cost us.
Yeah.
So, would we be able to reject the contract with? Going back to them with additional. Negotiating terms on specifically around max?
I would, if, if the, if there's a consensus of the council, I would approve the cons, the contract with that condition. And then I will go back to them and if they don't accept it, they don't accept it, then we have to come back. And we either, you know, come up with another term or come back, we're gonna come back to this body for approval.
And I think too, we should check with the county to see if there is a possible way to work with them. If they, if they uh, you know, contract or whatever they decide.
And they might have approved it, I just know there was some concerns.
Reasonable for both sides.
Yeah, okay.
So then do I have to amend my motion?
There's still a motion on the table, yeah.
If you would like to amend it.
Then I would like to amend my motion that we would accept this contract. Where we, the city can cap how much we spend.
How much would that be?
Two thousand dollars.
Yeah, cause if last year was about fifteen hundred, is that right? Two thousand seems like a fair number.
Would? Anyone like to second that amendment?
I second.
Motion's been amended and seconded, any further discussion?
Now, we, we gonna enter in contract before we contact, contact these other people?
I can contact, contact them first thing tomorrow, but if they can't offer boarding services, it's not gonna help us.
Yeah, I don't know what they can do, but uh, it sounds like they'll reach out and do whatever they can, so it's worth, it's worth.
I mean, yeah, I can call them tomorrow. Um, I just don't know if they'll offer boarding services, I think, I wonder if they're just to, to try to get them. And we still have to have dogs too, so I, I can check on that.
Cause I know they do have mobile service, they do go out and do the trapping. Uh, they, it sounds like it's pretty, but it's worth holding till we enter in the contract, I'd like to see what they can do.
It kinda sounds though that they weren't willing to budget on their contract, so. I mean, this is negotiation.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, I would, I would agree that, yes, we'd still explore the other options in the meantime, because even if they were to accept our negotiated um, contract. We still have to bring it back here to officially pass to, to sign.
Um, well, I think they would approve it with that condition, if Tri-County would approve that, it would be fine, wouldn't it? If they would accept it, if they agreed to it. It could be done and we could approve it.
And then we don't come back to this, right?
No, if your, if your conditions met.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, with that in order, I will second Jeff's motion.
I think we have.
I think we had a second, I think we were just for the discussion, but, but we noted your comment.
Correct.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on city housing RFP process, consider action on proposal received from Central Minnesota Housing Partnership. Did you have any comment or would you like me just to tee up rejection?
Yeah, we, I needed the council to make an official action on that.
I think from our last meeting, we, we discussed this, I think in great detail, the fact that we'd like to go back for RFP. Uh, so the first, the first thing then uh, we'd want is to uh, uh, make a motion on rejecting the Central Minnesota Housing Partnership proposal. Which I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. More importantly, we move on to discussing uh, the new solicitation process for revised RFP.
Yep, so um, what we did is we did make some revisions. Um, the biggest ones are kinda highlighted in your, your packet. Based on some of the conversations we had at the last wow session. Um, we took off the requirements that it is, that it's required to be workforce housing or um. The, you know, the income of the, the, we just took that off, we did keep in there though that, you know, we encourage it, um, you know, options of, of workforce housing or, you know, medium level housing, income level housing, whatever we would call it. And then we also made the change that we would offer water and sewer infrastructure pipe. And then there is a, just shy of six hundred and twenty-five thousand in ARPA funds, so um, we have that available as well as a subsidy. Um, should a developer need additional assistance um, with that. We still kept the, you know, the land price, the offer. And we kinda made some changes to the ARPA section because we are the sub-recipient of the county funds. Um, it is our job to work with the county on making sure those funds are expended appropriately as the agreement we have with them. But we just put on there that they need to cooperate with the city to make sure we have the proper documentation as needed for that compliance reporting. I also just took out some different, some of the intro history stuff, just to kinda tighten it up a little bit, make it a little more uh, shorter. And then I just rearranged a few things to try to see if it kinda follow a little easier um, for those that are submitting. The big question, um, we, we have to decide on to is timeline. We had a little bit of discussion on this at staff level, um, two and a half months maybe, two and a half, three months. We had a little bit of discussion on this at staff level, two and a half months, maybe, two and a half, three months. I think we had about a one month turnaround last time, giving them more time. But also keeping it soon enough so that they could possibly get some work done this year. One thing we may want to add is requirements for what they need to get done this year. So do we want to put a condition that they get the plating subdivision, those type of activities completed this year, just so that they keep movement forward? And don't wait for everything until next fall when we have only a couple of months left to spend this money? Because we need that infrastructure in the ground by next year.
And that was the date, October twenty-sixth?
I put October thirty-first because that's kind of like the end of the construction season.
Okay.
You know, you you don't usually see a ton of construction work beyond that date, but I that's just a date I threw in there. But we might want to have some other deadlines or put a put a note in there about what we think should be done or substantially complete this year. And that would also be reflected likely in a development agreement. Did I miss anything? Did you have any questions, then? I guess I kind of went over what we did.
Just around the ARPA funds, you mentioned that we had just over six hundred thousand dollars available. Is that after what we spent for sewer or water pipe?
And remember, it's our money and like the county money, and we had committed some money towards this project to match. So, yeah, so we just basically took the total funds, took off what we spent on pipe, water and sewer stuff already, and then the remaining is there.
Okay, but we're but we with that, though, we're no, we're not at risk to have the money spent by the end of this year.
End of next year, it means.
We have until end of next year to have it spent, okay.
So essentially, we had to, with the projects we did this year for the pipe, we did, we use city ARPA. Because we have to report on that. There's kind of two different steps. We have an agreement with the county that satisfied reporting on the county ARPA funds. You know, because we have it designated or obligated in that manner.
Sure. Yeah, I like the sounds of two and a half, because I'd imagine we have to get this thing rewritten and then approved again by us for before it can go out, or can we?
It's pretty close right now. If you guys, if you're comfortable, I think it's very close. Um, I I guess the deadlines are kind of the big thing.
What, end of April?
We went through the substantial process last time of approving it and making sure the language was correct. So the amendments made didn't differ necessarily from the first round of the RFP, but what is going to differ are those deadlines. So if we can approve deadlines, we could then work at a staff level to get this out as soon as possible.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I think we think about the end of April, something, enough time for us to be able to get the, get them, get them to us so we can view them and and possibly approve something that May meeting, which would be the beginning of May. So if we can have by the end of April.
Open them if we have, if we have requests, open them at the end of April so we can have it for the May meeting.
Well, and and you know, what we may do is we have to schedule a special session like we did last time.
Right.
You know, we may pick some finalists or and we may need to, you know, work on getting some more information. That that's a possibility.
So amongst staff discussion, did we feel that two and a half or three months felt better?
I think we're thinking end of April.
We thought end of April was a good timeframe, one, to give the developers enough time to put a proposal together. We want to make sure that we are working with them or looking like we want to give them the time that is necessary that they can put together a meaningful proposal. And we also want to have time that we can review at a staff level and then make sure that construction could potentially start this year. We're not asking it to be done from a developer perspective because there is engineering work that needs to be completed as well likely, but at least if we could see some progress.
Sure. I like the thought of end of April.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep, yes.
But and then, but you're still looking for direction, though, as far specifically around what things we wanted to have them complete prior to year end? Do you need that from us as well, or is that something staff level would work through?
Staff could make the specifics. I think it would be helpful to approve language that could be inserted into the RFP that we would like to see plating or some sort of progress along that line done before the end of the year. Just so the expectation is clear from the city and the developer perspective that we don't want this to be awarded and then sat on for several months. We do want to see some progress made.
All right, and so to the construction engineering experts, what seems reasonable to have them have executed by year end that would make it feel like they're going to start doing things the following spring?
For sure, the development agreement. We'd want that done by the end of the year.
Okay, so development agreement?
Yep, because that can put in some very specific deadlines and dates on what we need done at that specific time and the consequences of those. I think we can talk about potential plating, too. I think as a staff perspective, we thought that could be a good middle ground where we're not rushing the engineering or design process, but we are seeing progress made.
Okay, so development agreement and plating would seem like a reasonable request in the RFP to let them know that we'd want that firmed up.
And then are you comfortable if I just back in dates? I'll do the deadline of end of April, but then I may have a a question section again that we'll put in once we release it, give them a few, couple of weeks, and then we take questions. Are you comfortable if I just do that? I mean, basically, we're going to handle that internally anyways. But it just allows them to find any clarification. And then we will keep in those languages that we may need to have them come and present. I did, I did make a little change to that, too, because I just wasn't sure who was all going to look at this, if we might do a joint session. So I kind of made that general, that it'd be city council or our consultants, you know, for the city. Because I do think if we if we want to invite other members in, you know, we can do that. I just wasn't sure exactly how that's going to look. And ultimately, I guess if you guys are okay with that, we can invite those people if needed.
I think that'd be an advantage.
I think that's fair.
Yep. Yeah, I'd be fine with that. Yeah, I like the idea of cleaning it up a little bit, wordsmithing it, so it it's a little more easy for them to work through and and be interested in wanting to put a proposal together. I mean, you you left in there the emphasis on affordable housing, senior housing, you know, or a mix thereof. I I don't know how I feel about apartments over there, but I'd rather almost see it all or none, but.
So just what we have is we're options for seniors are those fifty-five plus and as moderate to higher density for housing. And then we have in the paragraph that follows that, we're interested in proposals that include as many housing units as possible targeting workforce. So we're, we want some options if they can do it. We're just not saying it necessarily has to be all workforce.
Sure.
But I don't know that you want to say.
Yeah.
That was one of the discussions we had at the staff level, too, is is you do want to sometimes leave some flexibility for the developers because they may have a certain expertise, their way to, you know, utilize the property. That they can do this, they can then also add that, and, you know, they can make it the whole package essentially work out.
Do we need to be more clear on having, I'll call it an easement of some sort for the golf course? Because right now, currently, they kind of have a back road.
Um, that's a good question.
Because I think that that community housing, they've put like an apartment right over it.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if we want to have certain verbiage in there that needs to speak to this. Somehow, they have to be able to access this.
It'd be in the development agreement, I'm sure.
So that would for sure be in the development agreement. We can certainly put references on there that there are recorded easements or accumbrances against the property. And those can be looked up, too, or they could call with specific questions with the sign.
All right, that makes sense. I'll just leave it up to them to question it if they have, okay.
As many options as we can get.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's makes sense.
As part of the plating process, too, we'd likely be seeking more easements. So I don't know how specific we want to get in this RFP on the easements because we may need to negotiate that or discuss that as the process goes forward, too.
Okay. Are we forgetting anything?
Yeah, I would, we want a motion, though, to to authorize the RFP and and I'm going to make sure I got all the deadline of end of April. And adding those those targets for the end of this year into the process. Is there anything else that I missed?
I'll make a motion to solicit a new RFP. That would include an updated date of the end of April and agreements on development agreement and plating by year end. And the other adjustments that were made.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I'll open it up for mayor's comments and open forum. Please come to the podium, speak clearly into the mic, your name and address. No, okay, all right. Moving on to department reports, we have Ashley here today talking about the ECE franchise agreement.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I want to give you an update on the East Central Energy Agreement. Sarah and I have been discussing for the last several months, actually, on a possible franchise agreement with East Central Energy. As you may recall, we entered one with Excel Energy last year as well. The challenge that we're coming to is how we can rectify having similarly situated franchise fees with ECE as we did with Excel as well. They have two very different systems and how they charge their customers or their clients, depending on which company you're working with. And they also have different ways of measuring their energy usage as well, too. So we are working through that. They did just give us a proposal yesterday, so we will be working to see if that can be something that can work within the Excel Agreement as well, too. So the hope is next month we can still have something for you.
Seem though like the negotiations are, they're at least, they're trying to figure it out to to make it.
I would say we are getting some resistance from East Central Energy on how we can work together with it. They did just kind of tell us this is their proposal. We're trying to be creative then, too, and now we have also been reaching out to Excel more to see how we can make sure that we are in compliance with their franchise agreement as well, too.
Okay, because the intent is to make sure that the charges are similar.
Yes, so for state statute, we cannot charge drastically different rates for these franchise fees. So they have to be at the same level or higher. Now, I think from a consumer side, we don't necessarily want to have two different fees because you could get questions on why is one fee higher than the other for similarly situated residents or customers.
So would it? Is there a possibility where where we may have to go back and amend something with the Excel Energy Agreement?
That's not been a discussion, but it's not out of the realm of possibility. We're hoping to avoid that, obviously, because that could open up additional questions from Excel, too. So far, we haven't had any issues, so that's not to indicate that Excel's looking to change this. They've been very helpful in the questions we have had. But if we go down that route, I we'd want to make sure it stays limited and contained, then.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move to Chief Katie McMillan on police updates.
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you received the SAT report for the month of January. We had three hundred and ninety calls of service. Medicals are up. A lot of that, we have had a lot of mental health calls last month, so that's in there. Civil is higher than usual. Child custody, there was a lot of child custody complaints. In January of twenty twenty-four, our number was three sixty-four, so it's up from last year's January. If any of you received any calls or anything of officers being down in metro area, it's fine. They were just following up on a theft case that we received back lots of stolen property, so. But other than that, that is all I have. Unless you have something for me.
How about the TZD hours? You find it hard to fill, though?
Um, trying to get officers to work them are hard, but coming up in February, there's a saturation for the Super Bowl. I'm not sure if any of them are going to do it or not, but hopefully we get them filled.
Yeah, I'd like to see some hours on that.
All right, thank you. We are going to move on to City Engineer Jared Griffith with some updates.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I just want to provide a quick update on our two projects that we are currently in the design phase on. Both of them are intended to be constructed in twenty twenty-five, first being our lead service project. We are, I believe, at at our last council meeting, we talked about that we were still working with the residents. I think we were on twenty to twenty-five-ish inspections still off the schedule. We are down to what, twelve as of this morning? And with that, we are moving to a different kind of a form of reaching out or should go straight to door knock, or door knocking and and door hangers and hopefully get the remaining twelve on the books here so we can get those scheduled for in February and and get that off down to for a state review. With that, then any questions on lead service project and the schedule for that?
In in this project, are there any vacant homes that you're dealing with in this project at all?
I believe one is selling their home, right, Mark? But I don't think there's any vacant homes. There's some renters. But I don't believe there's any vacant homes unless you want to include the one we're splitting in the future, but.
There's some vacant, but we've made contact with the people.
With the with the prop owners?
And we have family contact.
All right. Any other questions on lead service?
What have we, what's the timeline on that?
So for that, we need, our goal is to have plans down to the Department of Health for review by the end of March. So we can start constructing this this summer.
This summer? What summer, what 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 month?
Oh, uh, well, I guess based off of the last few that we've done, they haven't really started till after July fourth. There is a, we are, if we will, if we get there, get down and and submit end of, uh, in a March. That is about a month earlier than we have in the past. So hopefully, being in June could be an outcome, but it it's tough with the with the new program right now that they're working with. They try to stick to their schedules. We've been kind of behind for the most part when it's come down, come down to getting those reviews and getting getting a funding approved and everything like that, so.
Who who's behind?
Uh, like the Department of Health and the PFA, like just just working through that process since it's such a new program. Working through the the kinks last year, so it's it's been a process. Like, we're just, we're all learning as we go, essentially, so. I can only only tell you what we've done in the last couple of years, and that's been starting construction around July. So, and we are sitting at forty-ish services, which which is dual before our end, end of the construction season, so. Yep.
That part he's talking, Jeff, is just the LSL, the lead service line.
Yep.
He'll, so that comes, we have to have the water mains in first.
Okay.
So the rest he'll have on the real project in a second, so.
Yep.
So no, that's only the water line, sidewalk to house.
And really, the only, with starting in July with those lead services, the the coordination issue that we've we've seen so far with the street project and the lead service project, because like Mark was getting to, usually that the the water main is already installed by the time we get to that point. At least for our street project, portions of our water main will be installed, you know, Broadway or or fourth, whichever, wherever we start. But the the coordination, I don't want to say issue, but the coordination that has been coming into play in the past project is is our finish work, our like sidewalks. We don't want to be putting sidewalks in, installing sidewalks, and have the curb stop be dug up, you know, right next to the sidewalk, right? So that kind of timeline of that that finish work has kind of been pushed back a little bit, but with a project this size and starting, I'll say on fourth, I don't know, probably whichever one, getting and then also having the lead service project start on that same street once they get going. We should be able to make those our, our substantial completion dates for our street project as well for the sidewalk, so. Any other questions? On the lead service? Nope, okay, now I'll move into our street project, um, I wanna provide a quick update on our schedule, um, my intent was to bring plans for approval tonight. Um, unfortunately, I was able, unable to bring those tonight, and so I'm asking the council if we can hold a, uh, kinda special council meeting towards the end of February here, uh. February twenty-fifth, I have on my, my s- uh, schedule, I'm gonna walk through with you, uh, to get those plans approved. Um, that would then have bidding, or while we, we would have then start advertising the end of February. There's a, for our four twenty-nine process, we need to have three weeks advertised once and three weeks before the bid opening. Uh, is what would satisfy the four twenty-nine process, so that would be a bid opening then of March twenty-seventh, we would then bring. The project and those, those bids to council for approval, um, for a council meeting on the fourth. Which I believe would be another special meeting, cuz I think it's the first is the, is the first, uh. First meeting that month, right? I think we're meeting, are we meeting the fourth? But the first though is we're, are we, are we meeting on the first?
Yes, we have a meeting on the first.
Yeah, so I guess that would be a, we wouldn't have by that first. If we have a bid opening on the twenty-seventh, that would push us beyond our packet deadline date, I don't think, unless we, yeah, I don't think we wanna. Have it, bring that to the first meeting essentially, so we would then award then a, a special meeting on the eighth. Would be that timeline, that still fits with our construction schedule as far as starting mid to, mid to late May for construction and um, we go from there. Um. Hey, another update on that would be that, um, we, we've talked to city staff, um, the goal that we should have for our tree clearing. Um, should be before the end of, uh, end of March, March thirty-first, talking with, with city staff. Um, most of those trees, or a good chunk of them at least, uh, can be handled in-house, uh, there might be some that we might, might need to reach out and get quotes for, um, but. Most of those trees can be handled in-house and satisfy that deadline, is my understanding. Um. Any questions on that schedule?
Well, Jared, I would've liked to seen it tonight.
Yep.
Uh, the special meetings cost money. Um, I'm a little concerned about the timeframe.
Yep.
I think, uh, a fire has to be lit, I am disappointed, I was really hoping, we've been working on this, we've had the information, I was kinda hoping to have the information. Tonight to move forward.
Yep.
But with the special meetings, um.
Yeah, we have, oh, sorry.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned.
Um.
This is a big project and coming out of the gate, we're not doing so well.
Okay, and I know at our last meeting, I, I think I directed, directed us and made, you know, that we were on schedule. Um, now, like I said, unfortunately, we had our internal eighty-five percent meeting after our, after our council meeting, um, up to that point, we were on schedule, uh, I think it's. Not to, it's, it's definitely on, on, on me as a project manager for that to get done on a certain time, um, but I underestimated the. Production loss over the holidays, um, and uh. When we did our eighty-five percent plan review, um, it was not to where I wanted to be to bring to the city staff over for our ninety percent plan review, so, uh, we will be having that plan review. Uh, I think we scheduled it for Friday for our, for internal or for external, um, and so that's our, that's our game plan moving forward.
I do caution on the special meetings that we have to call on this project. I suggest we don't make it a habit, that's my opinion.
Does it have to be the end of February versus what I would consider our. Regularly scheduled second meeting of the month?
Well, and um, I can comment a little bit on that, um, the question was if, to escalate the bidding. If it meant having a special meeting to move it up a few weeks, that's, I said, I, I'd like to look at that option, um, rather than push the bidding later. But it's ultimately up to the city council, um, we had, we were, we just talked about some options to get it closer. The later you bid, you know, you can have, and bidding, we still don't know what the numbers will come in, that's still a competitive bidding environment, but. The goal we had with this project was to try to bid it early, be one of the first ones to bid.
As we have in the past.
Um, and so that's why we were trying to find options just to move it up even a few weeks. To try to get ahead of some of the other ones, if there's other ones coming in.
Can we reschedule that for the second?
Is, is Tuesday the eighteenth unrealistic as far as just our normal scheduled, I mean, I know we don't, I know we don't normally have that meeting, but it is there and.
I don't know that plans will be ready.
I, um, like I said, we're having a, we're having a city staff nine percent re- review meeting Friday. Um, I am waiting to hear back from county to have it early next week. Um. Having things buttoned up by the thirteenth for that packet deadline. Quite frankly, I don't, I don't think will be, will be doable, so, I mean, depending on the comments we get back, but, uh, county doesn't really. I mean, fourth is their, is their, their baby, I guess, but, um, based off of discussions we've had with the project, I don't see a whole lot coming, a whole lot of comments coming back from them. Um, but that would be a, that would be a pretty quick turnaround if we have that, if we don't have that meeting till like, like Tuesday, you know, all those plans, comments and getting done. And getting a packet put together for you guys by the thirteenth might be, might be tough, um, now. If it's doable, I, I don't know what, Sarah, um, as far as a timeline and, and, and getting a. Um, advertising, you're, you're holding another meeting, is that, what kind of a timeline do you need for that?
For a special meeting?
Yeah.
I need three days posting, don't count the first day, um.
So if I, if we know by the eleventh whether or not we can make that thirteenth work, is that enough time to?
You mean the eighteenth?
Sorry, yeah, yeah, it, or thirteen as far as the deadline for the packet, so.
Yeah, that, that should be fine. The eleven, yeah, that should be fine, that'll make posting, no problem, um. I just need to make sure when we have a special meeting, when we get to the point of the four-two-nine process, I gotta have a four-fifths majority to order the improvement. So when we, if we call any special meetings along this process, we just have to make sure that one is covered. If the council's comfortable with that though, we can, I can let you know what we find out. Um, and I just wanna add to, I don't know if Jared mentioned, this is a two-part process because we have the county state aid road, so there's a separate, they have an approval process for that too, so. It's kind of, it's not just a local control, our own project as well, so that kinda complicates things.
Yeah, and I, I should, thank you for mentioning, I should've mentioned that, as far as the state aid review goes, um, we've been seeing roughly a four to six review week time, our timeline for that. Um, so when we would, when we would be essentially approving the plans out either on the eighteenth or twenty-fifth, whichever day we go with. Um, that would be contingent upon, uh, state aid review, now their, say a portion of this project is just on Fourth Avenue, South Highway, very little. Um, I'm anticipating a whole lot of comments back from state aid on that portion, it's pretty straightforward, um. So hopefully it's in that, that shorter duration of as far as that four-week timeline, um, either way, that, uh. That bidding schedule should, we, the only, the only caveat is that we need to have state aid approval before we open bids. So if that duration does get pushed, that might push our open, opening back a week or two, but, um, we can advertise before we get approval from them, so.
So, eighteenth seems. Cautiously optimistic, but the twenty-fifth. Seems like a more reasonable deadline for your end. And then. What we would need to cover or go over, there's not enough time in between the twenty-fifth and the meeting on March fourth. To cover, that, that we have to have another s- special meeting above and beyond the twenty-fifth, or would we be able to. Meet on the twenty-fifth, approve things.
Yep.
Granted, they, we approve them and then on the fourth, our normal.
Yeah, there will.
Regularly scheduled meeting.
Yep, there won't be anything project related on that one, other than just updates any week.
It's essentially to start the advertising process and you gotta have so much time.
That's what, when you approve the plans, you also be approving the ad for bid process, or approving to start that process, so we would be then submitting. The deadline for the paper will be that Friday, the twenty-eighth, right?
Okay.
Otherwise.
Yep.
And so we'd have enough time to get our ad in, in that week, and so they would be posted then the following Tuesday, which is the fourth, and that starts our three-week. Of advertising clock to meet the four-two-nine process.
Okay, so the fourth starts the clock?
Yes.
Okay. And so with regards to the county state aid, is that, so we approve on the twenty-fifth and then at that time, that's when. The county state aid gets to approve it after we approve it, or is that going simultaneous?
I will, our, our, our plan is to submit to state aid before that twenty-fifth deadline.
Okay.
Meeting, it's just, we won't have approval from them be- before we get your approval.
Sure.
Or, you know, ask for your consideration to approve the project at least, um, and then, uh, but we just can't open bids until after we get that approval.
But we don't need to wait for their approval to get the bids, or to start getting or soliciting bids, okay?
But we may need to, to have an addendum for a couple of plan sheets, um, when we are bidding, uh, but like I said, as far as what their portion of the project is. It's the block in front of public works here, um, half a block of reconstruct and a quarter of a block of overlay.
Yeah, so we're not using, so we wouldn't be using our regularly scheduled second meeting of the month, we'd essentially just be moving it up a, or moving it back a week. But it's considered a special meeting with regards to posting.
If we're okay with it, we can just move it back, um.
Do the fourth?
Like, if, to the eighth, is that what you're talking about?
No, the eighteenth.
Oh, okay, oh.
To the twenty-fifth, I mean, cuz we are, we already have it in our calendar.
Yep.
That we have a third, a second meeting.
I would assume we wouldn't have that one and we would move it to the twenty-fifth, I would at least say try to.
So, okay.
But I'm saying also if we're, if we're looking at April eighth, have another special meeting in order to do the bids. We would take the bids or accept the bids that day?
On the eighth of.
Wasn't that one of your proposals, was the eighth?
Was the award the project, yeah.
Award the project?
Yep.
We could possibly look at just rescheduling our regular meeting and push it to the eighth. You know, if, if, if that would work better too, and it's not ideal, but it, maybe there's not a need for us to meet on the first and the eighth, maybe we can just shuffle it. I can still get bills and stuff, I'll probably, you know, that's pretty close.
Sure. So we can cross that bridge.
Yeah.
Next meeting.
And I can let you know what we come up with as far as the twenty-fifth being an option. But I guess that the reason this is being explored is just to try to move things up as much as possible.
My only question, if we do the twenty-fifth, can we start a little bit later, like a six o'clock meeting? We just have conferences that we signed up for.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So like, is that something that everybody else is, okay, so we'll just try to start like six, six-thirty, what do you?
Six is fine, we're, we signed up for five-twenty, so.
Well, give yourself some time.
No.
Depends on the kid, how much time you need, right?
No book fair. The amount of time limit that I can get out quicker.
Okay. For that meeting of the twenty-fifth, to make best use of our time. In calling a, a meeting like that. I think it'd be prudent for us to add. Or discuss in, in greater detail some of the, the goals and things that we talked about our last session. And we talked, we kinda highlighted five items.
Yeah.
Um, so there might be some opportunity for us to kinda dig into one in more detail or something, you know?
So I, yeah, so we could just do the, the needed action item and then we could continue the workshop, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, any other questions for Jared?
Alright, thank you, um, comments noted.
I will, I will make a one, so you, you mentioned tree removal by the end of March or starting the end of March?
Uh, by the end of March, so. Hopefully, starting end of February, working our way through March is kinda the, the thought right now, but we're gonna work together on that one.
Just curious, what if we didn't accept any of the bids?
And, and as far as having the trees removed?
Yeah.
And then not moving forward the project this year?
Just kidding, me, I'm just hypothesizing here.
Worst case scenario, yeah, um. With a project now, may not be the size or the, um, all, you know, all the streets including one project, you know, if this project doesn't move forward this year. Um, this project does need to happen from a city utility standpoint.
Yeah.
Now, whether that's this year or X number years down the line, uh, I think removing those trees is gonna happen, so.
Regardless, sure.
That'd be, that'd be, that'd be my answer, I.
Just making sure that we, that we're not putting the cart before the horse or something weird or, or something else.
They have to be, that's a regulation, they have to be removed by the end of March, we don't wanna have the work not done and then all of a sudden, we're not ready for the project, I mean, it, that's. But ultimately, the project, I think, has been determined as a high deed.
Right.
So, it's, if it doesn't happen this year, it's probably gonna be looked at quickly the following.
Right, nope, just making sure I heard that right and it was from a timing standpoint, we're talking about not even opening bids or, you know, receiving bids until after that, so, so I'm making sure that, that made sense.
Yeah, and as far as that goes, that's, that's not uncommon, that, that we, at, or communities do a lot of tree clearing in that November to March kinda timeframe, um, for this particular.
In anticipation of the project, nope, that makes sense.
And we'll communicate that to, to those, you know, neighborhoods people, so they know what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Right. Okay, perfect, any other else?
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Jared, uh, we will move into public works, uh, we've got, uh, Mark Papins was here to fill us in.
Can I first? Can I first have Jared, yeah, it's undermined, but Jared Vogel showed up tonight from Bolton Mank, so I'm gonna have him do the force main stuff, if you wanna take care of that, Jared, please?
Perfect, thanks, Jared.
We, we did the agenda, we weren't sure if he was showing some.
Alright, good evening, Mayor Council, and closing your packets this evening is pay estimate number twenty-five for the wastewater regionalization project. Um, pay estimate amount is in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, and should the pa- payment be approved, that represents approximately ninety-six percent of the project being complete, so. Uh, contractor, although it is winter, continues to work on some punch list items, uh, that they can currently collaborating with Saint Cloud and the flow metering readings. Um, on their end of the system to make sure that their data's matching our data, which is matching all the flow meters, so, that's an ongoing collaboration. Um, but we are recommending approval of pay estimate number twenty-five to Geislinger and Sons in the amount of two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And with that, Mayor Council, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
How are the issues on the other end?
Um, so basically, what's being evaluated is the number of gallons that are being read on the Saint Cloud end versus what's going through our meters. And then making sure that all of the other, um, new flow metering stations that go into the Saint Cloud system are corresponding in, in gallons. So, so far, uh, the data that we've received, um, is looking good, uh, it's with Saint Cloud currently and they're evaluating it. To determine whether it's in their tolerances, but I, I believe that everything's proceeding, uh, well.
Mark, any concerns?
No, I will tell you that, and Jared's not even aware since, that's why it's on my phone, I apologize, there come, automatics coming tomorrow and Bolton reps are coming tomorrow, they're gonna try to hammer out a bunch of stuff, so. Nine-thirty tomorrow morning, we're trying to get everybody together, we're having troubles, we need everybody on the table, and, uh, they're gonna be here tomorrow, so I hope we really hammer the punch list. And, uh, they're gonna be here tomorrow, so I hope we really hammer the punch list down tomorrow. Of the stuff we can do, there's outside stuff, but I'm talking skater stuff, so.
Sure.
Any timeframe when we're looking at being a hundred percent complete?
Uh, it'll be after the ground is slugged. Uh, we still need to eliminate that discharge, um, review the areas that were seeded last fall. Make sure that all that grass is growing, so, uh, there will be periodic punch list items going on. I would anticipate into June, but, um, good news is that we're pumping and things are working for the most part, aside from punch list items, so.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, all, all but done. Great, uh, so we need a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, payment of two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
Great, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Council.
Thank you, Jared.
All right, Mark?
In the packet, you sent further information today, the, yeah, the information, we bought that chassis for a snow hall. Of course, we're higher than planned. Uh, we started out high, you see on the top. You know, we're hoping around thirty and the chassis we paid more, we got a little newer, a little lower mileage, so I knew we were gonna be over. Um, the box with some PTO and some hit stuff we added. We decided we'd rather come and ask if we could do this route, so you can see the chassis, the box with everything and then the two together down there. We had sixty in there. Um, we're not asking for additional funds, you know, to up, but we are gonna have to cut somewhere, so. Instead of moving these numbers and cutting, we're just gonna move, what I'm proposing is move, and I went over this with Sarah today. The twenty-five that we had for the park play structure, if you remember in the CIP, we split that. We would just hold that off till next year, we would put it back in, but next year's CIP is heavy. And with the project, I know you guys are gonna be cutting it anyhow, so we would, right away, we'll take the seventy thousand for that snow truck and move that over to the right, so. If it makes sense, it's really gonna be a plus forty-five or, well, for fifty. But we're gonna have to cut more than that next year, so. So no additional funds this year to do this purchase. It's just we're delaying stuff over for their, future stuff over for their. Could we, I will tell you, we do want to do the more yet this year. The snow truck next year is definitely gonna go one or two years over, you know, being we're getting this one. We're gonna move it over a couple of years. Right now, we're just gonna say we'll kick it one, but, um.
Possibly two.
I don't see why we won't.
Okay.
I mean.
Next year's CIP is, we know is concerning with the fourth Av and project and all that.
I mean, knock on wood, there hasn't been a lot of snow to push the last couple of years.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's gonna, one of these years we have to get, we still have to have the equip, you know, equipment and.
Right, so the, and, but this is a snow truck that you're purchasing?
We bought the chassis in November.
And now we're just finishing.
Now we're buying the box for it.
Building it, okay.
Used chassis, but the new box.
Okay.
We did that ba- back in before two thousand and ten, two thousand and, two thousands. Same thing, we bought a used chassis and a new box out of Wapton and, uh, so that's a ninety-eight is our newest snow hall truck. So that'll stay, that's one we're gonna kick a couple of years.
So we would, um.
Would like permission to purchase, where we're at tonight is purchase the, uh, Laramie, sixty foot Laramie dump box from, uh, there's two quotes in your package, we have to have two quotes.
It's in the paper too.
Yep.
And, um, from, uh, Twin Star Equipment Manufacturing out of Clearwater, Minnesota, forty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, zero cents. Um, if we do this, they do require twenty-five percent down. They're holding prices right now, ten days, that's what prices are changing. Grant, um, he's been good about holding stuff, but nobody's quoting this non-state bid stuff out. So, well, we need twenty-five percent down, so a check for ten thousand dollars added to this month's bills, so we can sign right away.
So I, if the council chooses to move this, we want the contingency of the, with the ten thousand dollar down payment being authorized as well.
Being it wasn't in the bills list.
Yeah.
Sure.
Any discussion or questions? Keep that as a note.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna push money around, essentially, and just back some projects back?
We're gonna have to delay, we're not, yes, we can't get more money, we understand that.
Right.
Okay. Man, it sounds like we're already gonna be looking at having the discussions for next year's CIP to figure out what we can push, um, and rearrange. Okay. Well, yeah, we're, we've gone this far, we have to get, we have to finish the truck. And, uh, this, sadly being the lowest, this, I mean, as far as this company and, and you're happy with the bid in the company?
I've never done, I've talked to people who have used them and they've been happy with them.
Okay.
To me, it's not the Cadillac box, but this isn't hauling gravel every day, you know, we need a, it's a heavy box, but it's not a, for hauling gravel, which we don't do with this truck, so. That's why the other bid you saw was higher, that's a little heavier, a little heavier hoist. We feel, and we have the hoist specs, I don't think I included that in there, and we feel comfortable. The hoist will pick more than the truck's supposed to grow, so, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Let's just approve the purchase of.
Just the purchase price of the forty thousand, six, two, one, and
Ten thousand dollars.
A ten thousand dollar down payment, um, for this month's bills.
As part of that forty thousand, not additional.
Yep, as part of.
Second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro, uh, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Other than that, I don't know if I have any thing else that wasn't covered with the other people tonight, so.
I apologize, I was not able to make it to the, um, banquet. The other was like, this last Saturday, two Saturday, two Saturdays ago. How did, how, were you able to attend? Yeah.
Mark was his usual great emcee. He knows just when to make you laugh and just when to make you serious.
Okay.
Thank you for everybody coming, we appreciate, and I'll show you a little what, what we did during the year.
Yeah, good, good. Great, well, thanks for, thanks for putting that on, that's good.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you.
Move on to Sarah?
Um, first, if I could, um, we provided you copies of the, um, EDA met before the council meeting and they recommend approval of two downtown facade applications. So if, um, you would like to consider those, they're for the eye clinic and the stamp fitness building. Um, they're looking to do some awnings, paint, um, refresh facade, um, so I guess.
Windows, I think windows are included as well.
Windows too, yeah, yeah.
Uh, very similar look and feel to what we've already been seeing, uh, with other, um, projects downtown. I, I mean, again, I don't think there's anything negative you could say about this program and what it's doing for downtown.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's, uh, you know, near a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar project, right? To- in total, between the two?
Yeah, um, he owns two buildings and, yeah, they're gonna, I think, they bid them all together so they can.
Get a deal.
Yeah, make them both work.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, they recommend approval, so if the council wants to consider that, we can get that approval going and that paperwork.
Is that just a motion?
That's a motion for those two addresses, yes. So two twenty-one and, uh, two nineteen, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve two twenty-one and two nineteen, fourth Ave, um, downtown facade improvement grant applications.
Second.
Do we need to clarify who was officially second?
Sarah. I'll determine.
Okay, Sarah's got it. Uh, motion's been, uh, made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, um, all right, so, uh, other than that, um, uh, I did want, I do want to bring to your attention, uh, Mark and I had to work on, uh, issue today. We're going to have to send, um, a couple, uh, or some additional notices regarding the lead service, lead service line inventory. We, we missed something in the hundred and forty-six page manual, hundred and sixty-four page manual, and we missed a couple of sections. So, um, we got approval through the Department of Health to just send those out to the, there's, what is there, twenty?
Uh, it'd be more than that, yeah.
Yeah, some notices. So we'll, just to let you know, we're gonna be sending out an additional, um, notice, letting the people know that this section was missed in your lead service line notification. But the state responded back to me right away and, and said that our plan to do that is fine and we'll be compliant, so, um.
So it's more about just a notification?
Well.
Piece?
We got a, you know, a nice letter, but.
On Friday afternoon.
Yep, um, and yeah, we looked at, we, we just missed it. I mean, that's all we can do, and all we can do is fix it, so we just responded, hey, this is how we propose to fix it. And they said, that's fine, and we're gonna move on, so.
We did get templates from even Saint Cloud. I don't know if they didn't send us all the information or if they didn't include it or what, but that's one reason ours wasn't, we followed what other cities gave us. And we don't know if they, I haven't talked to them since, you know, did they not give us all the information or that part of it?
Yeah, and.
We did the maps, we did all this nice stuff and.
And we had to send all that into the state and they've had that for months, um, and then we just got this letter or this notification Friday afternoon, so. For fixing it, I just want you to be aware of it.
Nothing that, I mean, as far as financially or, or cost of the project or anything like that at all, time?
It's our time, yeah, so.
Sounds good.
We'll take care of it. I just, in case people wonder why they're getting a second notice and, and that, that notification does bring a lot of questions. People aren't sure what that means, is my, you know, is this okay or, or need to do something right away, so you might get questions on it. Other than that, um, I will, I have a number of follow-up things to, from today, but I also did wanna ask, um, I met with the civic group, um, with Monita, um, and we had discussed the hundred and twenty-fifth, if there was anything we wanted to do, and, um, she got a quote on fireworks a while back. I don't know if that's something that's interest to the council. I talked to Mark a little bit on locations. I don't know that the civic group has enough funds to pay for fireworks, but I guess I'm here to ask, is that something you want us to look into further to see if we can do something to celebrate? Or is that not something that we're interested in? We have done that prior for other celebrations of either fund days or the city, so it's just, um, it was a thought for something a little extra special, but.
Would there be an extra cost for liability insurance?
So the firework quote we have included an insurance policy, you pay like a five hundred and fifty dollars for the insurance policy. If that's something of interest to the council, I can confirm with the league too that we would be covered, but, um, there was an insurance cost to that quote.
Well, I think we could look into it.
Yeah, so was there, was that committee looking, I mean, were they willing to, to help with funds or?
Possibly, they just, they're, they're limited.
Sure, well, yeah, I believe it.
Uh, and, and if it's something, I just said I'd ask you, um, and then we can come up with some options to see. And maybe it's, we can find some money, maybe they can find some money and we, you know, a sponsor and that makes it work. I, it's, I think it's doable. I, the quote we have was like, it, was it thirty-seven hundred? Thirty-five hundred? It was a pretty minimal display, but it sounds like, you know, we could get still something very nice for five thousand or less. You know, depending on what we wanna do. Um, Mark's checking into locations, cause that can depend on what size they need to, depending on where you're having them. So if it's something you're interested, I'll look into it further and get you more information, I just, uh.
I am.
I am.
I'm not.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just wondering, uh, you know, do we, do we put it out to the masses and ask them if they, if they would like to see us do something?
Oh, like a survey or something?
Yeah.
Like a poll, yeah. Like a poll?
Yeah.
Like, I could do a quick survey monkey and just throw it on social media.
Just to get an idea. Or, I mean, and, and maybe there's, I, I don't know what else you could do or would do, but just to see. I mean, I would hope and think that we'd like to make a big deal of it, um, but be interesting just to see what people think, say.
Yeah. I can do that, yeah.
Other than that, I, I would be for or think it'd be a good, you know, something fun, neat, unique to do. I mean, if it's, you want it every twenty-five or fifty years, so.
Well, since we really didn't, it wasn't really brought to our attention, but a few month or so, um, we need to celebrate now that we know.
Yeah, right.
Location is gonna be, uh, we talked today, um, I talked to actually friend of mine who does it, who actually works for this company. So, part-time, and, uh, seventy-five yards per inch, and they have proposed up to four inch, some of them are. So, you know, it's three hundred yard area, we have to have a three hundred yard safe area, so. You might have to and hopefully they can see, you know, don't need an answer tonight, I just want you to where they ask, I mean, you're gonna blow them up over downtown and they're gonna come down on the houses, it's. Yeah, there's a plan, but.
What about Holdridge, is that, or is that?
Are they gonna see, you know, yeah, well, if people wanna stay uptown or, something will work out.
Yeah.
About Lions Park. Lions Park down by the ponds.
That's what we did it in two thousand, I suppose, twenty-five years ago. So.
And the school.
Safest area down, right?
But the company they have, you spoke very highly of, so I'm happy with that.
I mean, even the school has quite a bit of open space, just from visibility and.
Yeah.
Parking seating, I don't know.
Well, and we're, we're looking at, it's not gonna be a long show. I don't think we can afford, you know, a huge show like Saint Cloud. But, so we also gotta think of when we're gonna do it and trying to, you know, maybe work around existing crowds or where people are gonna be doing other things, you know? So like maybe people viewing it from downtown like they did in two thousand. I believe that's where we viewed it from was. Yeah, so.
Okay.
We'll come back with some ideas.
Yeah, great.
And then if you have anything else for me, otherwise, I think, I talk to you.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, old business?
How's our flow, Mark? I forgot to ask you that.
Incoming?
Yeah.
Just one nineties, a hundred and ninety thousand a day, you know, give or take. I don't know what last month, but just cause like a day like today, we're sampling, so we're running more out, so I've been trying to hold it down, um, till spring, but I'd call it, water was, uh, is still under two hundred thousand, obviously, so they're both down. I wish I would've brought that, I knew you were gonna ask, so I meant to bring the water one with, I have the year-end stuff, we did it already, so. But sewer is about a hundred and ninety thousand a day, gallons a day, we're running in there, between there and two hundred.
Great, any new business?
We gonna discuss the parade go by problem?
First, uh.
Do you, do you want to?
We open voted.
We should make some decisions so the public knows what we're doing.
I work with the residents at the nursing home four days a week and my goal is recovery from COVID. They, they aren't, they don't feel included, they aren't included in many ways. And last year was a real depressing holy fun day for our seniors in the nursing home. So I sent them this first letter and discussed what it meant for them and they gave the input and I think everybody's got a copy of it. I will be attending the meeting on February twenty-fourth. And then, um, that one I intend on highlighting, we have twelve people that are between the ages of ninety and one hundred years old. That means for up to one hundred years, and they've lived here all their life. They have supported our community. When they, we had the meeting, they did the meeting on parade go by, there were only three people at the meeting. Two thought there was something they could work with, and one was against changing to going by the nursing home, again. We have also, I've also talked with the residents to come up with what if we don't get this? 'Cause you, you're gonna, if, everybody doesn't get there what they want. And they did come up with some ideas. I, I think all the ideas, the parade's a good idea, they, two of the three were in support, like I said, of having the parade go by the nursing home. Now, that's a beginning, and that's only three people could change. The other things we came up with was having the band do a concert in that open lot between Jennie O and the nursing home. So that they have, because there's no way a video is the same as a parade. You can't do that, you know, or the drum lines practice every morning for a couple of months on Penn. Well, they have Pine. And maybe we could get the drum line practicing on Pine for a week, even, I mean, drum lines are absolutely phenomenal to listen to and to watch, so that's where it's at. I know how they feel, and I know they feel like they're being ignored. And that is one part of why I'm doing the communication part and helping them see we don't get everything we want. But I think it's worth talking about. Juanita and Bill Colton were the two that were on, on board for having it start in Lions Park, where they would line up. School buses drop off, then they go back to the school and go to the school from Lions Park. That's just one idea. So, yes, I am the rabble rouser, but I think it's a good thing for the residents to understand what goes into this. They cannot get to meetings. And right now, staffing issues keep them from even being able to have a Zoom meeting there. So it's just, it's tough. And any one of us could end up there. And we need to think about that.
You've been doing it for years, Mark. What do you think?
Well, I, I'm looking.
I'd rather know what you think.
It flows, it, can I?
Yeah.
It flows much better going this way than ending up in a residential area.
Years ago, I think, didn't they bring them up to Dewey Center, didn't they bring these, whatever they could, whatever?
I'm not sure where.
But I'm just, a thought entered my mind, there's a pretty big lot there right on the corner now, that could possibly be worked with, with Dombrowski's, that, with some kind of transportation, we can get them up that far.
It isn't about the transportation.
But then they'd have access to bathrooms to the Dewey Center.
The problem is, when you have people in wheelchairs, you are talking two to three attendants to help them. This is not a normal, for getting them there can be bad, if it's hot, they need to be, it, when the parade went by those two years, they had one really hot year, one really rainy year. They were able to take the residents into the nursing home if they had to cool them down. You have to understand, a lot of them have, due to medications, age, and disorders. Their bodies do not regulate heat. So when they're there, they could go, but like I say, we have come up with alternatives, and I think they're viable. But we have to remember, they've been here a lot longer than any of us.
Well, I wanna highlight the fact that I, I, this isn't, it's not about not including them. I don't think anyone's going out of their way to not think creatively or not want them to be a part of it, you know, let's make sure that that's very clear. We talk about the safety and concern of these citizens with regards to transporting them, we also have to think about the safety of the children, uh, that make up a large part of our parade with bands. Um, and that's where probably more of the emphasis goes towards what makes sense for the route. Um, you know, even starting in Lions Park, I would, I agree, that's not a half-bad idea. Um, there's plenty of parades that start in residential areas, but we don't have the shelters or the safety if there were to be a storm, which is actually pretty common for our Foley Fun Days. Um, where, where would we, where would they go?
A thousand kids.
A thousand kids, um.
That's why we have a school.
That's why we have a school.
You know, and so there's.
And it's a school sponsored, you know, you have to provide certain things when you have a school-sponsored activity.
We got young on one end, the old on the other, and so how do you do this?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't envy whoever's, you know, we, we have our, our civic group that, right, volunteers, um, countless amount of hours trying to help put this on and make this as friendly for all folks as they can. Um, but, you know, to your point, yes, I don't think it's about, um, you know, stopping or not getting creative for what we could do. I mean, some great ideas, right, banned in the area or adding some more events down on, on, you know, on that side of, um, uh, closer to them. The practice, all, all good, I, I don't I wouldn't say that the parade route could never change. Um, I just think everyone has to at least understand or look at it from both lenses, you know, what's, what's realistic, what's safe for, for all those involved. Um, you know, I think it'd be easy to say, well, sure, just have them all come down, hire some extra temp help and, and bring them all down. Same can, same safety concerns that we have with the young children as we do, um, you know, those citizens, so, um, it, it's, it's not an easy decision. I would entertain that we continue to explore and talk about ideas, especially some of the ones you put together. Um, you know, again, I, I, no one's going out of their way to not make it so they're not included, um, or not willing to, um, expand the horizons of Foley Fun Days to, to all, all citizens and all, all demographics, um. But I, I don't, I don't know if it's me or us that would dictate or decide what the parade route is going to be, I I mean, I, I think we talked about this last year, at the same, you know, same token, we have that committee in place, um, you know, and they work with our city and our safety officials to make sure that things are, um, the way they need to be. Uh, I know, I mean, there's permits, there's, I mean, city, there's state, there's, uh, there is a, a lot of cooks in that kitchen, um, from an involvement standpoint.
Well, and it's, it's the city's, um, insurance and it's the city's, like, we have to sign off, like, all the permits are already in place for this year. With Mendat and the county, we have to sign off on all that, you know, because it's ultimately the city's overriding insurance for the festival that's on the, on the line, so, but we've always left the planning and logistics, 'cause we've always had a great group of volunteers. We don't want the city staff to have to take all of it on, it takes quite a bit already on, um.
Primarily, that's why I want them involved, to understand it isn't necessarily, because last year it felt very personal, because they had just had two years going by, first year, lots of problems, second year, even by admission of the committee, fewer problems. So I want them to understand what the process is, but I want their voice heard at the same time.
Yeah.
Which, that's where it'll be, and I'll be going to the meetings until we know where it's headed. And because most of them don't have computers and printers, I will be their masterpiece.
I, I can tell you the permits right now are the route it was last year. That's what insurance and that was what's, was submitted, so I can tell you that much. Um, and that, the advertisements and the, um, registrations is that route.
Sure, wh- which it has, had been for many, many, many years prior.
The, the, the movement was very clearly a temporary movement.
Right.
Yeah.
And it happened to be two years versus one, just because of some delays on, on construction. Um, you know, so I, we're lined up though to be able to stream it again, or we're, we're gonna be able to stream it, I know that's not the same, but at least it, you know,
nope, I'll.
But it, but at the same time, I don't think there's any, in, obviously, planning further in advance on possible alternatives for routes, but I, I think it's important though to involve, you know, those that, um, more specifically, the, the students, the bands, th- those schools, um, I, I think need to be a, um, a large part of the understanding as to maybe why, uh, we're doing what we have to do. You know, I mean, if, if, if they're, if they say, yeah, we, we want a different route, or we don't care, or whatever, and we can make something work in the future, I, I don't think that's a, a bad thing to, to continue to, to go down that road. Uh, however, I do think that continuing to find additional programs or offerings for Foley Fun Days, you know, including gardens and, I mean, and whatever other areas or, uh, demographics that we can support, you know, you know, why not? I mean, I think a lot of the things that we have for Foley Fun Days is all through that organic growth, you know, you know, the five K, the, um, the parade, I mean, we're very unique with our, our program over those three days, and I don't think there's any reason why we can't continue to add to those programs, I mean, they added what a, a pickleball tournament this last year, was it, was a new thing to Foley Fun Days? I mean, so, I mean, we're continuing to add things, uh, as a, uh, as that committee does, uh, so I don't think there's any reason why we can't explore alternatives to include them in different ways, while continuing to explore alternatives or options for routes for parade, for future, for future parades. Is that fair?
Well, I've always thought, the process is very fair.
Okay.
I just need to.
But you can help deliver that message?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I agree with, I wish I could get them here. We can't get them here.
Right.
We have no transportation method from Foley Gardens and Foley.
The, the care is the more, probably the more relevant.
The care is the biggie, for every person in a wheelchair, you'd have to bring three to four people. That's a lot of bucks for temporary help.
Yeah.
But if we can come up, that's why I had suggested the school, the band, even, not even necessarily on Foley Fun Days, at the open park, it's not heard, the big lot between Jennie O and.
Sure, yeah, can they, can they practice Monday and Tuesday of, I mean, or something, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so it's, I want them to see that you do matter and they are listening.
Yeah.
That's all I want for them.
Yeah, no, I, I like it, I like, I like the idea of exploring just alternate, um, additional programming within Foley Fun Days that would include not just the gardens, but, you know, o- other, other entities, other demographics, I mean, we have a, we have a lot of folks that we can, we can entertain. Excellent. Any other comments? Any additional new business? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.
Do you wanna continue with that workshop, or do you wanna?
Do we wanna, do we wanna just maybe include this with our our February twenty-fifth?
I just have to put along meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, we include, um, our additional goal priority setting, um, conversations with that meeting we're gonna have for in February, yeah, makes sense.
I just didn't know how to write, it just come on meeting.